Ladies and gentlemen, may I have your attention please? The show starts in ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one, go.
Hey everybody, Sean Morris with Truth, Lies and Political Bullshit. Hope you're doing well. Got a couple of special guests I want to bring into this show. We're going to talk about something that's somewhat disturbing, I would think, for many people, especially if you live in the city of Cohoes, New York. But first, let me introduce to you my good friend Billy Smith. Billy Smith is a city councilman here in the city of Cohoes. He worked with me when I was the mayor of the city. And it seems that every time Billy's on with me, there's some kind of other scandal going on in good old Cohoes, and Billy's got to talk to us about that. We also have a, what I would call, a citizen reporter, in a sense. His name is Timmy Fibidow. I'm going to bring Timmy on as well. Timmy has a Facebook page, Fifth Ward, and he spends a lot of his time doing what most people won't do, is he's trying to uncover all of the nonsense that goes on in the city. Spends a lot of his time reporting on the page, the Fifth Ward. And there'll be many people that say he's a pain in the ass, but there's many people that visit his website and love what he does because he's the only one doing it. So welcome, Billy, welcome, Timmy, to Truth, Lies and Political Bullshit.
Thanks for having us.
You guys can hear me okay? Everything's good, you know, when you have a podcast, sometimes you have a little echo, but it sounds good to me. So let me give you a little background about what's going on here. So a couple of days ago, I think it was December 22nd, it was revealed that one of the city councilmen, Don Russell, who has been a councilman, I think Billy, this is his second term, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
He represents the downtown district. He is a councilman and he's a restaurant owner. He owns three separate restaurants in the downtown. Unfortunately, on December 22nd, it appears that he was arrested for what the police called a forcible touch. I'm assuming that means you touched somebody forcefully that didn't want to be touched. Donnie Russell, let me just give you a little snapshot of Donnie Russell. Some of you may know him, some of you may not know him, but you know, Donnie's been the staple in the downtown for some time. And there's his picture up there in the corner, if you can see him. Billy, I wanted to bring you on, and Timmy, because I had a suspicion that A, Timmy knew what was going on well before we did, and B, you're part of the city council, Billy, that's been, and I'm not saying it's you, because you've never been quiet, but you're part of a city council who's been very silent on what's happened to Don Russell, even though, if I'm not mistaken, this is his second time. Just a few months back, he was accused of forcibly touching a young man who went to the police. The city sent that case to the state police. The state police did an investigation, if I'm not mistaken, and I'll let Timmy talk about that, because that's what he does. And they found there was not enough probable cause to arrest Don Russell. But here we are, just months later, from another incident that appeared to happen in the summertime, and they arrested him in December. Timmy, you want to give me a little background about that, since I think you've probably known this has been going on for months?
Well, actually, it's been going on for years. There's been other people that remain silent on this, okay? But basically, Alex Hebert, who was 17 at the time, he was going for a job interview, and he was at Donnie McGoo's. And Don Russell brought him down to Anthony's Restaurant and upstairs to a vacant apartment that was being renovated. And quite frankly, if you don't like the language there, you can bleep it out, but he asked the kid if he gave blowjobs. Shocked the kid totally. Okay, he had his hands all over the kid, poking him and stuff like that. He wanted to, insisted on giving the kid a ride home over into Troy, okay? So the kid got intimidated and he bailed on out. And then eventually, they were chatting back and forth on a chat program in which Russell was now flirting with this kid, all right? So to wrap up what happened is, eventually, the kid's grandmother, he was telling her what was going on, and the grandmother finally got a hold of me due to my page. And then we took a look at it, and we encouraged the kid to go to the police. He was reluctant at the time because he didn't have a car, he had no mode of transportation to get around. So eventually, we did get him to the police station to file a report. And then, once the report was filed, politics being what it is in Cohoes, Mayor Keeler says, "This is a hot potato." He just installed the Public Safety Commissioner, Jim Ward, and between the two of them, they said, "Let's turn this over to the state police." And then the state police took over. They met with Alex, and the end result was, they didn't have enough where they felt they could prosecute and win. And it's all about resources sometimes. Are we going to spend the money on basically a he-said, he-said case? And this is how Mr. Russell seems to operate. He gets someone alone, does things to them, and then he claims, "Oh, he's innocent," okay? And then it boils down to, once again, he-said, he-said. Even Keeler, just recently, said, "Oh, it's a he-said, he-said case," on his interview with TB6, only days ago, all right? But the bigger question is this: Don Russell had to turn himself in on December 22, in which that time he was arrested. But there was already a complaint before a court and on the docket, which means that this incident, which happened on August 28th, had been reported well before December 22, and it was kept concealed from the public. And this is the second incident of sexual touching by Russell against someone's, against their will during the Keeler ad me.
Let me bring in Billy Smith for a minute. So Billy, you're a city councilman, right?
Correct.
And we found out as a public about this on December. And I found out because, again, Mr. Fibidow, who really becomes the city reporter for a lot of things posted on his page, otherwise I wouldn't have known. As a councilman, were you aware that this was happening? Does anybody report to you and say, "This is happening for the second time"?
Well, we knew about, well, I knew about the earlier incident with Alex, you know, per, you know, Timmy's page and Timmy's insight. I walked into a local establishment to order some food, and I was asked, you know, "Did you hear about Mr. Russell getting arrested?" And I'm like, "What the hell are you talking about?" And that's how I found out, and that's when I reached out to Timmy and others and said, "Listen, we got to find out what the hell's going on, because if this is true, if he was arrested, you know, and the incident happened back in August, why are we just finding out about it as a council? And you can't tell me that the mayor and the chief have not had conversations about this for the last five months or four months."
Well, I could tell you for five.
I just find it ridiculous that, you know, we have a council, and it's an election year next year. Obviously, we got to go out and start getting petitions for whatever office we run for, and it just doesn't bode well. And like you said earlier, Sean, you know, I'm on an island by myself with these five, and it kind of sucks because I'm not the yes man, I'm not the rubber stamper, and I can't get nothing done. I even talked with, you know, President McCarthy about this, you know, prior, you know, when I heard about it from this establishment. And I said to him, I said, "Bill, what are we going to do? Well, we can't do nothing," and yada, 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 and you know how that goes. So just the other day, I, you know, talked with Bill again, and I said, "Bill, I mean, I'm going to call for his resignation." Well, we can't force him to step down. I said, "What do you mean, 'we can't force him to step down'? There's something in the charter that says if you're any misconduct, that, yeah, we can have him expelled." So I don't know what misconduct is in this council's mind. I don't know if it's stealing power from the city. I don't know if it's getting, starting work without permits, which Mr. Russell has done. And I don't know if it's, you know, forcibly touching, you know, other people. So what is misconduct in the minds of this council, is my question. Tomorrow, when we meet at 10 o'clock, Friday, on the 29th.
Well, listen, nobody can speak to these problems better than I. As you know, I was the mayor of the city of Cohoes, and unfortunately, there were some allegations made against me. And I find it ironic that Billy McCarthy, and I like to call Chris Briggs the moral compass that's always pointing towards the S for self-preservation, and Randy Knifka, who will join us on the show later on, they could not wait to have these special meetings and call for my resignation and have me removed. Right. And all of the stuff that I was accused of in that particular incident that led to the other stuff was found to be not true at all. In fact, it was very clear, I was cleared by every police department, yet they still wanted me to resign, and when I wouldn't resign, they tried to take away my power. And, you know, today, I sit back, I look at the city and think, "Oh my God, how did it get destroyed in three years?"
Well, and like you said, at one speech, I think you might have mentioned the former mayor as the most corrupt mayor in the state. Where are these people now? Where is the John McDonald's? Where is the Gil Ethers? Where is the mayor to say, "Listen, you know, we've been down this road before. This is serious allegations against the councilman."
Well, these are in an arrest, in an arrest.
If I was Bryce Chopper in Cohoes and stole the carton of milk, you don't think CNN would be at my front door? You don't think it would be like the OJ, the white Bronco chase, that they'll be chasing me all over the city? I mean, it's just, it's double standards for certain individuals, and because I'm not that yes vote on the council, somehow, we got to keep Mr. Russell. And again, when we meet, I will, you know, put a proposal out on the floor, I'll put something on the floor to say, "Let's have a vote." And hopefully, I get a second to remove him, which, again, he won't, but at least these other five will be on public record when they're looking for signatures next year to run for office.
We have, we had the mayor of the city, Keeler, Mayor Keeler, as you can see up there in the corner. He's been pretty liberal for a guy who couldn't wait to call on me to resign. He has not called on Don Russell to resign. And in fact, I think you've just highlighted, there's been about six or seven incidents of Mr. Russell doing things like working without a permit and telling them, "Too bad I'm a councilman," and having parties on the block and not getting permits and saying, "Too bad I'm a councilman." And you have the second time now that he's been accused of the touching. And Mr. Keeler, who quickly asked for me to resign because I was running against him, has been very silent. And in fact, if you can read this, what it says is, "The police chief made me aware of the allegations. I've not spoken with the councilman nor have seen a copy of the complaint. My understanding, this is a he-said, she-said." I find that really ironic, because he was a superintendent or some high major in the New York State Police Department. He ran the whole.
Commander.
Okay, so he ran the whole entire state police for this capital region. And his response to two young men who claimed that they'd been touched inappropriately is, "It's a he-said, she-said." But for me, it was, "Get out of office immediately." So there is a double standard. Timmy, you're the one who found, I believe, or brought it to my attention, that Keeler quickly called for my resignation, when he didn't know one thing about the case that I was involved in. But here, he's quiet, and why do you think he's quiet? What is your take in your investigations that you've been doing?
Well, basically, where I'm coming from is, something is amiss with the timeline, okay? And as we've been pointing out here during our discussion, okay, the incident occurred on August 28th of 2022, okay? And then Russell voluntarily went into City Hall, in which he was arrested. But there had to have been a complaint already filed, because it was on the docket for him to appear in court, which he did, and then pled not guilty. So we're trying to get a hold of the paperwork or the complaint to know what date whoever filed this complaint did so. And then, from that point in time, the chief of police, or the mayor, or whoever, either councilman, they should have been aware of this, because this is not the first time, all right?
Yeah, well, I could tell you as mayor of the city that you get an email from the, I don't know if you would call her the secretary of the police, which happens to be the mayor's daughter, if I'm not mistaken.
Right now, yeah.
Or the other young lady who works behind the glass when you go in there, and she takes all the complaints and passes them on. But once a week, I would get an email, and I would know everybody who got arrested, every complaint that's been filed, because they send it to you as the Commissioner of Public Safety. And you're the mayor of the city, you need to know what's going on. So I would think that it's, I would call political bullshit if somebody is trying to say that when this happened, he didn't know about it. I know for a fact, because people still contact me all the time, that when he was doing construction, and he didn't have a permit, the mayor called and told the code enforcement people to get the hell away from him and leave him alone. I know that there was other incidents where things were said, police are saying that they're afraid to talk about it because they don't want to get in trouble, because this guy will hold them to this, you know, real unfair standard if, in fact, they talk about political things, like he's done to the firemen. Ironically, there was a fireman who was accused of something, alleged. No, you know, just, he was alleged to have done something.
Yeah.
And the city of Cohoes couldn't wait five minutes, but they had his picture posted up on the city website. It was all over Facebook with the big, you know, scenario of why he was arrested, pretty much, you know, prosecuting him on the city website before he was ever accused or prosecuted by the district attorney. So it was really, it's really sad to think that he went after the firemen because he didn't like them, because they're in battle with him over contract and manning issues. But shit, he would hide this from the public, because the guy votes in his favor all the time, and for whatever reason, he was afraid to come out and say that this happened. Billy, you know, what was your position on that?
It's frustrating, and it's disturbing, and the city should be outraged of this latest allegations, because I'm outraged. And I mean, I'm sitting on my phone, and I get the text messages, and I get the messages, you know, Facebook messages. What's the council going to do? What's the council going to do? And again, I go back to what I said earlier. I'm only one person out of six. I can put, you know, something, a motion on the floor. I'll need a second, which I probably won't get. My goal right now, and again, February's petition time, is to get these guys on the record saying, "No, we don't want, we don't want, Don Russell is not going to resign. I want him to step down." And I don't care if he sues the city, that's what we got a pretty expensive attorney for. Brian, handle it. You know what? You make $85,000, $90,000 a year. If he sues us, sue us. Let him sue us from his living room.
Yeah.
But this is, you know, bad for the council. It's a bad look, it's a bad image. And as someone that deals with, as a coach, that deals with kids, I work in the school district, I, you know, it's tough, because it's like, well, you got this councilman there that is doing these inappropriate things. How do you handle it? And it's a tough situation, and my handling is, Don Russell, resign. The council force him out, however we can do it. And again, I go back to what's called misconduct.
Yeah.
Well, Bill, let me add something, Bill, okay? Now, on November 8th, just recently, the voters have proposed, approved proposition.
Timmy, there's some kind of noise that's pounding in the background there, is that you?
Okay, yeah, I'm tapping the table.
Yeah, stop tapping the table, or you're going to be suspended.
Right. So anyway, proposition two, in that was two things that were important. One was on section C6-3, which referred to the language of misconduct in which a member of the council can be expelled. Now, typically, if you go to the, look up what the state of New York considers misconduct, okay, something like two cases of, I'm going to call sexcapades by Don Russel. Would that qualify? Because you have more than one person coming forward and saying, "He's doing this stuff to us." And secondly, in that same proposition, the voters approved the creation of a Commissioner of Public Safety, okay? The job was already funded, $70,000 a year, by the Board of Managers back on December 31st of 2019, okay? It's been approved by the voters, and yet here we are, going into January, the new budget, and Keeler should appoint a Commissioner of Public Safety, and that man, whoever it is, should forward this whole case to the state police, just like they did in the previous case. And now the state police will have two incidents that they're investigating for Hansy Don Russell on people.
Well, I mean, Tim.
It's a history.
Tim, who's he appoint? Does he appoint a friend of his? I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Well, that's what they did the last time.
What happens there, it's still not going to go nowhere.
Well, yeah, but he doesn't do the investigation.
Right.
And bottom line, Bill, even the state police, they bungled the thing. When they got all said and done, I went and met with these detectives, and I could get a feel right there, the way he's talking, "Well, he did all this and did that, and did this and did that, but we're not going to prosecute, we don't think we have enough." So they buried it. But look, at least you get it on the public record. Worst case is, we could dump Russell off in the next 12 months, or even sooner than that, in a primary, to get rid of the guy.
Look, here's what really matters, right? So nobody is more sympathetic to allegations than I, right? There was a time when I wasn't so sympathetic until the tables were turned, and the whole world was coming after me for stuff that I didn't do. Well, it wasn't the whole world, it was the five councilmen that are on this council now that are silent like crickets. Billy McCarthy and Chris Briggs and the rest of them, I like to call them, Don Russell and.
Where's Adam Biggs?
Well, again, Adam Biggs is a kid that I had great hope for, who fell right in line and doesn't look like he's going to be anything other. As a matter of fact, I would tell you that he's not going to win reelection, because the man who announced has a lot of friends, a lot of respect, lived up there for a long time. Adam could have been a great guy, but I think he's probably done. You have nothing going on in the Sixth Ward, you hear that's the crickets down there. Chris Briggs, who, you know, was, you know, the big voice against me, crickets, don't hear a thing. Billy Smith has always been a very boisterous man. That's why he's on an island by himself, that's how I was on an island. You can only tell the truth so long before they attack and want to kill you. Remember that, Billy. But at the end of the day, you're doing the right thing. But here's my problem, right? As sympathetic as I am, because I'd be saying, "Why don't they give this guy a chance to be, go in front of, you know, his peers? Let them decide whether he's guilty or not guilty, before he has to make a decision on his livelihood and his life." However, when the same thing keeps coming up, not once, twice, and there's been rumors out there, three, four, or five times, and then you have the Ethics Commission itself found him guilty, I believe, of some ethics violations when he was, what, stealing the power? I happen to be the mayor of the city, I'm the one who gave him the inside information along with the council, when we were talking about some buildings after the big fire, and how we had some economic development plans and people who wanted to invest in the downtown. We were really going along very well at that time, millions of dollars of investment. And he then goes down to the guy behind the city's back and buys the building for like 12 grand and turns it into a restaurant. And I think he got some, Timmy, I'll stand corrected, but did he not get an ethics violation?
Oh, absolutely. He was charged for misuse of his office, that's misconduct.
Well, that's misconduct.
That's the city power, that's misconduct, okay? And look, and since he's owned this property at 220 Revson Street, Anthony's Restaurant, he has not paid any property taxes on it at all to date, effective even today, okay?
So how much taxes does he owe?
Oh geez, I couldn't imagine.
In the thousands?
I would say, yes, maybe greater than 10s of thousands.
I better get my water bill paid then, so I can't criticize him on my show.
And he just bought the floor shop across the street.
And on top of that, Sean, he owes $1,500 because he hasn't paid his water and sewer bill at Anthony's either. And he's got like 130, 140 bucks in penalties, he doesn't pay his bills either, yet he gets $1,400 a month salary from the city.
Well, I don't want him to be, I don't want to misconstrue people and tell them, because I just sent my water bill in that I forgot to pay for the last quarter. So truthfully, you know, when your water bill's 500, 600 bucks, your taxes are outrageous. Sometimes you set it down and go, "Oh shit." But when it happens quarter after quarter after quarter after quarter, I guess there's a problem. So for the purposes of being honest and upfront, here's my water bill, I was just writing it out and saying, "Holy shit, I got to send them 540 bucks because I'm late." But again, things happen, and they happen sometimes just by chance, right? You forget to do something, you don't send the bill, you, "Oh shit, I went on vacation." But if it happens over and over and over and over again, I think at the very least, the council should say, "Donnie, you need to just take a leave, step aside, go through your process, stay away from the City Hall, stay away from everything, and let this thing either blow over, or you're going to be convicted." And then at that time, you know, the council can remove him for misconduct.
And he can do that, Sean, because at the end of the day, the mayor still have four more votes in his favor, so.
Well, the mayor's made a mockery out of it. And I don't want people to think, because, you know, he beat me in election, which he never would have beat me if all these things didn't happen to me and all of these people ganged up on me. At least that's my self-centered way of thinking that I could still have won the election. But this is a guy who's telling you that he's going to come to the city and he's going to clean it up, because somehow I had this big black cloud over me, because somebody made an allegation about me. Yet he's been involved in more scandals than every mayor that I can think of, other than John McDonald, who probably had the biggest bank heist in the state of New York history with his $2.5 million. But he had the scandal with the DPW at his house, with trucks working on his property, dumping dirt, grading dirt, and, you know, when it gets, when, I think, you know, Timmy Fibidow happened to capture some of that, but it was, I don't know who turned it into the particulars, but, you know, what do they say? He's the police, state police hot shot, and they basically say, "Oh, he didn't do nothing wrong." He didn't get a permit, and he filled in all this property. If you and I did that, DEC would have come up and made you dig it up and pay hundreds of thousands in fines. He got away with that.
Got away with all of it.
He covered up the police officer who was supposed to retire because he got a DWI and used his badge. He had a last chance agreement that said you have to retire at 20. Because that guy helped him get the union endorsement, he ripped it up, threw it in the garbage, and told him not to worry about it. And then six months later, he tried to cover up the whole thing that happened with that police officer and pulling out his gun. And the police officer, I think, eventually spent a day or two in jail, but he tried to cover that up and let the guy get his pension. So he's been involved in a lot of things, now it's twice with the Russell thing, right? So basically, what he's saying is, if you're a victim, and this has happened several times, it's a he-said, he-said, and I don't want nothing to do with it, and I can't do nothing, it's the council's responsibility. That's bullshit, because a leader is a leader is a leader. If you think somebody's done something wrong, you stand up and you say it. Now, it may cost you some votes, and it may cost you a career, because that's what happened to me, right? It cost a career. I have no regrets. I always got to call it what it is, right? I'm always going to stick up for the little guy, I'm going to help the people I represent. I don't want to be part of the good old boys' club, that's all Keeler fell into. Got a $100,000 a year pension, has benefits that you and I can only dream of, and he's involved in all these scandals, and then he's trying to take away all these benefits from the workers in the city. It's a hypocrite. And between him and Russell and Billy McCarthy, who I think, I don't know how the hell that guy is in charge of running the city council, because I don't think he's capable, I don't think he's smart enough, and I'm sorry that the people who may love him, because you can love a guy for being a good guy, but the city's falling apart, Bill. I mean, the downtown's almost dead. In three years, it went from being a utopia to being dead.
It's getting all, there's a lot of boards up in the city that I'm trying by, which we call, when you were in charge, it was All-American Boulevard, now it's this like Ransom Street again.
Yeah, and it's sad, but, and the reason I say that is not because I want to talk about how good of a job we did rebuilding the city. I want to say it because when the city's falling apart, and then you have all these scandals, and you're not willing to step up and be the leader and say, "This is what we have to do." Now you have your city falling apart, you have your council falling apart, the reputation's falling apart, and you're right back to where you were 15, 20 years ago under John McDonald, who I think did absolutely nothing to be the mayor of this city. I don't remember anything happening under his watch, but you're right back to that same thing. Stores are being boarded up, businesses are closing, Ransom Street is now Ransom Street. 787, you don't even see it patrolled no more. $15 million that we spent to try to save people's lives, and you don't even see the police down there no more. And now this is probably the worst scandal of them all, because if, in fact... And now this is probably the worst scandal of them all, because if in fact, this is the second time. And this is uh Donnie Russell's um M, you know, his MO, him and Cuomo, right? The touchy feely. Cuomo's touching the women, Donnie's touching the men. Cuomo resigned. The most powerful man in the state of New York said, I'm resigning. He didn't go to jail. Has too much power, too much money. Anybody else would have been in jail. Cuomo got a free pass.
Well, he resigned for the good of the state.
He resigned because he said, I can't get this cloud off of my head.
Right.
I was accused of of forcefully touching women. I didn't do it. I swear to God, I didn't do it. Sean Morris did it. I didn't do it, right? Whatever, whatever he said about me, right? The clown that he was.
Well, he should resign, he resigned for the good of the state.
But that's for Don Russell.
Should resign for the good of the city. Keep in mind, Don Russell was involved when they went into Cafe Monaco to get all their flipping and they trashed the place, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, and that that happened recently, okay? The guy is involved in all the things that cast the city in a bad light, okay?
Well, listen, there there's gonna be people who watch the show and say Morris is a hypocrite because he refused to resign too. Uh, but in my heart, I knew I didn't do nothing wrong. I wasn't arrested for any of those things that I was first accused of. And it wasn't till Governor Cuomo sent the FBI after me because I got cleared by his state police, I got cleared by the county police, the Cohoes police, the CPS reports. I got cleared by everybody. And then when he called me out to resign, I said he was the most corrupt governor in America, cuz I knew all the dirty shit he was doing. And then the FBI knocks on your door. You know what happens then? You're in trouble. You know why you're in trouble? Cuz you have no money to fight the federal government. You will spend millions of dollars. They don't care if you did anything wrong. What they care about is, at the end, you're gonna plead guilty cuz you're broke. I know that feeling. I was broke. I was so broke that I couldn't even go out and get a sandwich. If it wasn't for people who loved me, take me to lunch, cuz that's how much money you spend trying to defend yourself against the undefensible, right?
And that's probably what 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 happened with this Alex Heber, when, you know, during, you know, we all saw his interview on Channel Six, is that, you know, they didn't validate him then, but now all of a sudden this happens again. Where was his validation, you know, a couple of years ago, whenever that happened? And now here we are.
Yeah, and that's an embarrassment to the agencies, Timmy, right? That 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 investigate you. Because they investigate it, say there's nothing there, and then a month later, it's the same thing.
Well, as I told Alex, I says, Alex, you've been vindicated here by this second accusation, okay? They wouldn't believe you the first time around. You posted it, you you made your claims and they didn't wanna hear it. Now, typical of people like Russell, bingo, just took a little time, uh, two years, but, you know, people like him are gonna repeat and he sure as hell did it again, caused another complaint. Guys, look at I, when I have one plus one, it equals two, all right? And and uh so while yeah, I I'm a strong supporter of you're innocent until proven guilty, you also have to weigh the history and consistency of all the same claims made by now two people. And I know that there's others that that were touched as well that won't come forward.
I personally know a very good friend of mine, I've been friends with him since we were five years old.
Yeah.
And his son worked at uh one of the restaurants. And he he came out and said it, that that the owner, Don, was trying to hit on him every time he went to work. And he was a young boy and is nineteen, eighteen years old. And and so, listen, the reality is this, right? Again, I have more sympathy than anybody for allegations made, because once they're out of the uh, once the toothpaste out of the tube, you can't put it back in, right? So once you're out there saying things about people that are are really sad and egregious and 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 hurtful things that really just hurt a man when he knows he didn't do them. Um, I wanna be sympathetic to that guy to give him his day in court. But I also am a realist. And when it happens over and over and over again, something has to be done. I uh I applaud Billy Smith for for having the courage. He's always had that courage. Uh, but Bill, you know, what do you, what do you say to McCarthy? What do you say to Briggs? Have you talked to them? Have you said to them, uh, hey, listen, what what's what's your problem here? We did this to Sean Morris. We went out there and tried to crucify the guy. And and he was never even arrested for the stuff that we tried to crucify him for, and he was found not guilty on all them charges.
Well, in my conversation with President McCarthy, um, I said, Billy, you know, Don needs to resign. Well, Don can't resign. He doesn't have to resign. Um, again, because of misconduct that he's quoting, a bribery or signing a contract and voting on a contract, that's misconduct and and McCarthy's.
What's that mean, signing a contract?
So if, when you're on the council and and say you are part of a business and the city goes into in a contract with that business and you vote on it, that's that's misconduct supposedly.
So I'm, so McCarthy is, again, I'll tell you, he's clueless.
McCarthy is is going on paper and not on what's going around in his world, in our world.
What McCarthy is doing, though, is he's citing what's written in the Code of Ethics, okay? Misconduct, okay, is different than what's written in the Code of Ethics, okay? Code of Ethics, what he's talking about is a conflict of interest.
Right.
When you sign a contract. It's got nothing to do with misconduct. In fact, section, I think it's nineteen in the in the Code of Ethics, and treatment of public, okay? You're supposed to treat the public equally and fairly, okay? And that's not very well defined within the code.
Well, misconduct is simple, Tim. Misconduct means you do something you shouldn't do that violates something. In the workplace, misconduct could be, you violated the rule and you show up late five times. That's misconduct in the purposes of of employment law. Um, you could be a council member and be a fireman at the same time, uh, because that was fought in court in in Glenn's Falls. And you could still vote on the contract because you're not voting on an individual benefit for yourself. You're only one man of the fifty or sixty that have to vote to pass it.
But this is, this is where McCarthy is coming from. And I said, and going back to your instance, I I said, well, here we were, and you guys were special meeting after special meeting, trying to get rid of Sean on alleged allegations of domestic violence. Well, we all know where that went. Well, we didn't get rid of him because of that. We got rid of him because he was found guilty in court of other issue. I'm like, bullshit, Bill.
And I wasn't found guilty. I pleaded guilty. Cuz I ran out of money.
You were after him prior to that. And 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 there's not, and this is, you know, not, domestic violence is a serious issue and and the allegations were.
Somewhere along the line, when Terry got up, there was a bad echo.
Our echo, I wanna be. But these are serious, serious allegations that cannot be taken lightly by this council. And if it costs us money and Russell sues us to get rid of him, then you know what? Let him sue us, like I said earlier, from his legal, from one of his businesses, because it's an embarrassment.
Billy, hang on one second, because he must have pulled his earplugs out. Where are you, Thibodeau?
I'm back.
Yeah, when you left, you pulled your earplugs out and it all echoed.
Well, what happened is, um.
You had to take a piss.
Sorry.
Don't take a piss to on my podcast.
My battery got low on my laptop, so I had to get my charger and plug it in.
Yeah, so so Billy Smith was, going back to Bill, and let's just rewind, so we'll we'll cut this part out, but uh, so you know, Bill, when it was me, they were after me from day one.
Right.
Because McCarthy, McCarthy's always been a dodo bird for John McDonald, who's my arch enemy, right? Uh, I beat his girl in the election, so they they were after me from day one. McCarthy hasn't, wouldn't know a misconduct if it slapped him upside his head. Cuz he's clueless. He's always just been the puppet, right? Have McCarthy do this, have McCarthy do that, have McCarthy do this. And and so these guys are not gonna rock the boat. If John McDonald says, get rid of Don Russell, they'll get rid of Don Russell.
He'd be gone tomorrow.
If John McDonald's not saying nothing, cuz I don't hear his big mouth chiming in on this, cuz he couldn't wait to chime in and everything else, where's he on this?
Exactly.
You can't, you can't.
And that's what I stated earlier, you know, where is John? Where is Gil? Where is this Democratic Committee that we have a stronghold over the city, which I don't think is stronghold? Where are they saying, listen, something needs to be done? And 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 again, I go back, it's shameful on the other five representatives of this city not to do anything. And when we meet on Friday at ten o'clock to vote on DPW equipment, I'm gonna put to the floor a motion that we ask Mr. Russell to step down. Now, Don can say no, so be it. But again, two months from now, we're gonna be looking for signatures on whatever office we decide to run for. Are you running for office again or not? Because if you're gonna support Don Russell and you think you're gonna win a council seat, you probably got another thing coming.
It it's really sad.
I noticed, though, I, Bill, I noticed on the city website that this meeting for Friday is not posted.
Um, that I I I don't know anything about.
Above his pay grade.
Well, I looked.
I just posted it, yeah.
Billy McCarthy, Billy McCarthy, that, Dodo, Dodo Bird McCarthy's in charge of that, because he's the president. He's supposed to make sure everything's posted.
For for meetings and minutes and looked at when your next council meeting was set. And if you get a meeting Friday, okay, at ten o'clock, it's not posted on the city website, because TV six wanted to be at that meeting.
Well, again, that's that's above his pay grade. Those are things that are supposed to be done by by the president of the council.
January third is when they re uh reorganize.
Yeah. Who, were they organized to put themselves back in the same positions at the room?
I'm assuming the the five of them have their own conversations without me and I'm assuming it would be, I think it will probably be McCarthy and Alicio, but maybe roles reversed.
Hey, listen, all I could tell you is, the best thing that could have ever happened to you is that five of them don't speak to you.
Yeah, there you go.
You're you're not losing no, uh, you're not losing no sleep, I'm sure.
You're still getting two yes voters against council, council president, no matter how you say it.
Yeah.
Well, the bottom line is, the council's always kinda just, look, it is a strong form, uh, mayor form of government.
Yeah, it is.
Keeler controls ninety-five percent of stuff going on. That's why I said he should be taking a position. He took one against me when I, when I was not uh in a position where somebody should have. He wasn't even the mayor of the city yet. He was a mayor-elect telling me I should resign. Now he's the leader. He should be leading. A leader would step up and say, hey, I'm calling on Don to either resign, take a leave of absence, do something while this thing plays out, because it's really just not good for the city. And if you care about the city, Don, take that leave. I, again, support the right to have your day in court, man, because I want it mine in the worst way. I just ran out of money to do it. Uh, but after, if they would have said that I'd done this time and time and time again, or did this, 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 over and over and over, I would have resigned, because sometimes you just make stupid mistakes and you have to pay the price. Sometimes people are after you in this business to kill you. Um, and that's why I wanted Randy Knifka on here, who was one of the guys that orchestrated the hit job on me. And finally came out and admitted it to people that all the stuff that was going on was orchestrated by him and Steve Napier and John McDonald and and Billy Ricard and the rest of these clowns that act like they're the moral compasses of America, when they're probably the most dirty bastards you'll ever meet. But um you've taken a stance, you should be proud of that. Your kids can look at you, your son can look at you and see a man. Your wife can be proud of her husband. The citizens of of your ward can be proud of you, cuz it's not easy to always do the right thing. It is hard sometimes to do the right thing. Sometimes you stand alone on an island when you're doing the right things, especially in politics, where everybody wants you to kiss their ass and nobody wants to come out and rock the boat, right? What's the favorite favorite colored pants of a politician, right? Plaid, right? Because the son of a bitch won't take a stance. That's the reality. So, hey, Bill, you got a lot of courage. Donnie Russell, if you watch this thing, you know, I helped you get elected, I brought you into the into the business. My family got you elected. I mean, let's be honest, he moved here after um going belly up in Troy. He came to a city that was really desperate for a business. He opened Spindles, the wine bar. It was a nice place to go. I met Donnie. I think he's a nice guy. I had a lot of fun with him. Uh, his partner, Tony, is a just a extraordinary guy. I love him to death. But at the end of the day, if you if you if you're drinking too many glasses of wine and you're making stupid moves and now you've been arrested for it and it's a constant thing, maybe you just gotta get out of this business, because the scrutiny is just always gonna be on him for the rest of his career, whether right or not.
What's gonna happen i- is that, you know, you know, and cuz I got a, I got a mean message from from someone saying, well, he employs a lot of people.
He is a shit. So don't Norlite.
And, well, what if his businesses close up? Well, there'll be some somebody else to take over. The thing is.
Listen, Norlite, Norlite has employees down there making eighty thousand a year. Keeler wants to close them down cuz the smoke goes up by his house. Let's not be fools here. It has nothing to do with with the the projects. The city wants to close down Norlite. They wanna move the projects because the people living there, oh my God, they're not healthy. Well, is there a bubble around that place? Because what about all the houses going up and down the street? Is the city gonna buy all those houses up too, because it's not safe for them? That's that's the problem, right? Everybody's looking for a fucking way to justify why you can't do the right thing. He employs a lot of people. No shit, and a lot of them are young men, right? And they're getting, and they're right, and they're coming back saying, why I'm there trying to work, he's doing this stuff to me. So do you justify the the employees over the the these young people that are making these allegations? It's a restaurant. Guess what? Somebody else can buy a restaurant and open it up. And the way Cohoes is moving forward, they're closing up anyway. I don't see anybody in half of them anyway. So unfortunately, unless the city can get its thumb on its ass and figure out how to get it rolling again like it was for the last three years. Don't worry about whether his restaurant stays open.
Right.
Whether or not, worry whether or not these young kids that are working there are working under these terrible conditions. So whoever sent you that, uh, just hit delete, cuz they got no brains either.
Uh, I did.
Yeah, you know, uh, to justify the means uh by saying the guy employs people, why are you picking on them? It's just stupid. It must be somebody that works there. Um, tell them that you'll figure out how to help them get jobs. Hold a job fair for everybody that that works there, cuz I do feel bad for those people. There's always somebody who's a good person, who's on the residual end of the shit stick. I was the mayor of the city. I employed a lot of people. Where are they now? The people that I hired are gone, right? They're not gone because they, I would have fired them. They they're gone because the shit that happened to me and 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 what they did to me. And and when I was gone, so didn't the people I put in place. So, you know, that's the nature of the world. Uh, don't justify that by saying Donnie shouldn't step down or be held accountable for what he's done. That's ridiculous.
Yep. I agree.
Timmy, where are we at with uh with um, you know, the next step here? What are you, were you foiling some paper?
Well, yeah, okay, so here's where we're at, okay? Uh, I'm working with a reporter uh with TV six who's pursuing this. We've got a foil information seeking to get the actual complaint that was filed by this latest so-called victim, okay? That had to generate a police report in order for this to have gotten on the docket in a court. So we wanna find out when this initial complaint was filed. It couldn't have been December twenty one, uh, twenty two, the date he was arrested, and it had to be after August twenty eighth. So within that, did it happen in early September? Did it go there, you know, November? We don't know. And the city has to have the record, okay? Now, I've had a foil in for four days yet. They have not responded to it yet. But I am going to get the record, whether they they like it or not.
As a city councilman, Billy, have you asked for any of the particulars to see if you can get copies of them, or do they just kinda block you onto that too?
I I I have not asked. Um, the the latest thing, the only thing I've asked for over the last month was uh the five hundred dollar, uh, the five hundred uh Christmas cards that Keeler sent out.
Well, that's a, you you bring up.
At that point, was was a hot topic.
You bring up a good point. How does the city mayor use city funds to send out Christmas cards to people?
I didn't get one. And prior to that, a couple of months ago, he sent out, uh, I call it a a campaign flyer about the fire department on the hill to the fourth and fifth ward residents.
Using the city tax.
Residents are just around the corner. We don't matter.
Right, two thousand dollars. Look at it, let me add something. I have a foil in also for the list of those five hundred cards who got them, okay? I wanna know who got those cards. So there is a foil in for that as well.
Quit hitting that table.
Okay, there's a foil in for that, okay? And um, so they're very slow to respond to questions like this, but it should be at arm's length, especially the report on Don Russell, where the complaint went in. That report should be at what we call arm's length. It's right there. They don't have to do a lot of research to find it, and they should be able to produce that thing within twenty-four hours, okay?
Yeah, what they're probably gonna say to you, Timmy, is that this is an ongoing investigation. They're gonna come up with some kinda cockamamie reason not to give you the uh the the foil at this time, you can rest assured. But here here's the bottom line, right? We can leave it with this. Uh, I think people are smart. The people of the city Cohoes are smart people, right? They see their community, they love their community, they know what's going on in the community. And as long as you have council members like Billy Smith, who are willing to stand up and do the right thing when it's the most difficult thing to do. And you have uh city reporters like. you have, uh, city reporters like yourself, Timmy, that have the 5th Ward page, again, people could call you a pain in the ass, but the reality is, a lot of these things have only come to light, because you took the time to find the information, investigated fairly, fair, you were fair about all of it, you didn't just say, oh, somebody told me this, post it on the, uh, website. You took your time, you were fair. You took your time, you investigated, you looked, you talked, you found it, you found police reports, stuff that was being hid, uh, and so thank you for doing what you're doing, because, again, without people, citizens who are not willing to, to challenge authority, and fight authority, we would be held in, in the dark on so many things. The city Cohos is really, uh, holding us in the dark about a lot, uh, but as long as we have you two, I think the people can rest assured, that, um, the information will come to light, so, I'm really, uh, happy that we had the chance to talk about this. It, it's a sad situation, again, as a person, I like Don, uh, what he's doing is, to me, egregious, and he should be held accountable, if in fact, um, he's found guilty, but, because so many things have happened, and the, and the scenario's the same over and over, and you have kids saying the same thing over and over, I think he probably should step down for the best interest of the city, or take a leave, or do something where he removes himself from the city government, sit home, collect your check, like you do if you were suspended, uh, as a, as a public employee, I'm not concerned about the few bucks that he gets, stay out of the city hall, stay away from the kids, stay away from, you know, all of this, um, and let the, the system play, play itself out, uh, but, I, I probably would, would, would recommend that he resign, uh, because, how many times can you have the same allegation, and finally they arrest you for it, before you, before the public recognizes that it's, it's probably the truth?
Right.
So, uh, Billy, keep up the good work, keep sharing your, uh, your voice, um, you know, maybe someday you'll be sitting in the big seat, uh, are you running for mayor, Bill? Is it something you're thinking about still?
Uh, it is, it is something I'm thinking about, um, I'm actually meeting with a couple of unions next week, to discuss some options, um, a- again, whether it's, whether it's my time or not, I, I, I think I, you know, if I decide to run, I think I can beat them, I know I can beat them, um, it's just, you know, I, I have a, a wife that says, don't run, and, or I'm not gonna put up with you no more.
Yeah, well, hey, listen, I gotta tell you something, you know why the city is not, um...
And, and I don't, you don't need to be mayor to control the city, you just need, I just need two, two or three more votes, to make his life miserable.
Yeah, well, let me just tell you something, he- here's the reality, um, you like Shawn Morris, you hate Shawn Morris, in order for us to make this city the best it could be, to bring back all of the glory that it once had, you gotta work 16, 17 hours a day, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, throughout your whole term.
Right.
You can't not come to city hall, you can't just show up for a few hours a day, you can't just, in the summertime, not show up at all, you gotta, you gotta have your heart in it, it's for the love of the game, you gotta work tirelessly for those you love, and even for those that you don't like, because it's, it's, it's all about the city as a whole, that's not happening no more. You don't see anybody with any pride, Cohos proud is, when they cut down the signs, and put up the wrong dates for the new signs, because they don't know when the city was incorporated, um...
Wait till the water tower gets, gets painted.
Maybe they'll put his picture up there, you know, like this, uh, but, hey, listen, keep up the good work, I don't think the city's dead yet, I still think there's a way to bring it back to life, and, and start, you know, regenerating all the things that we were doing, um, in the past, um, there's a lot of people who I talked to that invested a lot of their money in this city, with their fingers crossed that something will change,